I'd like to call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded, seeing nobody else recording the meeting. If you'd please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Do we have any special recognitions?
We do not.
We do not. And I don't see any citizens to comment, but I do see a few student representatives to comment, so I'll turn it over to you.
Last week was homecoming week, which went fairly well. We had a bunch of spirit days. We had America Day, Class Color Day, Vajama Day, there's a few others, Tadai Day, and Hawaii Day. So it was fun. A lot of people participated. Then we had the assembly. We had a student speaker, or a unified basketball team performed for us, and it was really fun. It was nice to see. And the homecoming game, we lost, but the overall spirit from clubs and community was fine. Other than that, that's all I have for homecoming.
Excellent. Thank you. Ryan, what do you have first?
So last weekend, during the night of homecoming, actually, the marching band had their third competition. They won first place this time in actual competition in their division. Just earlier tonight, the math team, we did our first competition. We won second place in our division. And I also know the soccer team, the girl soccer team, which has been doing pretty well. They have a pretty strong winning record. I think it's three and one right now. We're playing Millbury. And today, in activity, which is our prep period almost, we went to home bases and wrote statements regarding how we feel we can bring our new mission statement, which is car, community, academics, and respect into the school community and into our lives.
Excellent. Great. Any questions or comments for our student representatives?
Sounds like things are great at Auburn High, as always.
Everything seems positive. So thank you for that report. I don't have any questions either. Do you have any questions of us? No? And Allie, you already asked for permission to take off because you had some things to take care of.
I have homework.
Ryan, you didn't ask yet. I'm just kidding. Yeah. You guys have fun. Have a nice night. Thank you for that report.
Thank you.
Come back anytime.
All right. I would seek approval of the minutes for September 19th, 2018.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes for September 19th, 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. We now move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Brunel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, similar to what we had a few years ago, this seems to be the year of many reviews in the Department of Ed. So the most recent one to share with you is regarding the National School Lunch Program. Mrs. King was recently notified that they will be out. We put a copy of the letter, I believe, in your packet. We will keep you apprised with regard to this, but I anticipate that all such reviews that take place will go well, based on the hard work that happens on a daily basis. The next item, I seek your approval, an increase in the long-term sub-rate. And these are for individuals who would be serving in one subbing position for more than 30 days, but less than half of this school year. We pay our subs on a tiered system, whether it's $80 if non-certified, $85 if certified, and $90 if they are a retired Auburn school teacher, maintains certification. Currently, we pay $95 a day for somebody who works in the position for 30 or more days. But what we're finding is when an individual serves in that capacity, he or she is responsible for doing planning at that point, because the individual is likely out for sick leave and unable to do so. They would be meeting with colleagues, doing some planning, and certainly be meeting and communicating with parents. So I think the rate of 95 is too low. We did do a comparison to look at area school districts as well. And so it is my recommendation that we move up to $150 a day if it's 30-plus days, up to half a year. Because once they work for half a year or more, they're paid at the bachelor's step one rate, which has been in practice for long before I was in this position, too.
I would entertain that motion.
I make a motion to approve the increase in rate for long-term substitutes serving 30-plus days in the same position covering for a teacher in his or absence to $150 a day.
Second.
Any conversation?
I would just say that having been a teacher, working with someone in that position, after a while, you treat them as an equal for parent conferences and sped problems or evals or whatever. And I certainly think they deserve the pay, because they're doing the work of a teacher. They're not just a sub anymore.
I agree. Absolutely. And it's not easy to find really good substitutes. So if you find one or two, and they end up covering for a few different teachers over the years, so I think it's a great idea. I think it's money well spent.
Yeah, through the chair. I was going to ask, do we have trouble filling those kind of spots?
You know, it really varies. So we have, I think generally speaking, finding substitutes in general, with the economy being such that many people are working in full-time positions. So it is a challenge to find substitutes. What we often find, and we talk about this as a leadership team, that once you get a good substitute who's there for on a day-to-day basis, when you have a long-term opening, you want to take them. So it reduces the pool a little bit more. We do regularly post on school spring. We put it in our email communications. So we really try to stay as up-to-date with it as possible, but once a principal really feels comfortable with a sub, they want them to do these long-term subrates. And they're more appealing to people, because you know what you're doing on a daily basis, as opposed to getting a call at literally 5:30 in the morning about the day.
Through the chair, quick question. At what point do they become a long-term sub? I just know if a teacher happens to be out for a few weeks, do they usually have the same sub in that classroom?
Through the chair, they make every effort to do so. Sometimes, it depends on the circumstances. So if someone is out and they know they're going to be out for perhaps a planned procedure or length of stay, then the principal plans for that. There are occasions when it happens that someone goes out believing they'll be back in a few days, and then it gets extended. But then the principals try to rework if a sub's been placed elsewhere, because the continuity is the really important piece. It's the ideal, certainly.
Any other comments or questions?
Sorry, one more question. Do they have to be 30 consecutive days in a row, or can it kind of accumulate over?
So through the chair, for this stipend, this sub-pay, they would be in one particular position, because they would be really assuming a lot of the teacher's responsibilities. When they go in on a day-to-day basis, the teacher is expected to leave detailed plans, leave materials ready. So they're really implementing what the teacher has prepared, as opposed to when they're in a single position for 30-plus days, they're really assuming all of those responsibilities. So that's the difference.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote.
Next in your packet is the October 1 count that Mrs. Zottner has put together with input from secretaries in schools. And as you can see, our 2017 number, and again, this includes school choice, was 2609. And we are now up to 2632. So we certainly are a district that's growing. You can see the net increase or reduction that came across the schools. But as I already reported to you, Swanson saw certainly the largest net increase overall, but total increase of 27, excuse me, 23 in total.
Okay.
And then the next item, on an annual basis, the town clerk, Deb Greemo, pulls together a team of individuals to decide who is the worthy individual to receive the John E. and Ethel E. Riley Award for this school year. So as we do annually, we seek an educator from the Auburn Public Schools. And once again this year, our two steadfast volunteers, Mrs. Doreen Gittar and Mrs. Denise Collins. So in the past, you've been more or less taking turns with each of them that have come. And Mrs. Collins, this being her final year before she retires in June, it's probably most appropriate that she do so. They're actually, the nominations are due on October 9th to Mrs. Greemo. So it is my recommendation that you appoint Mrs. Collins in that capacity.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make that motion, to appoint Denise Collins to serve as the educator representative on the Riley Award Committee.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions?
Thank you.
Seeing none, I'm happy that every year they wanted to do so.
I guess so.
Now, will Doreen be doing it every year?
It remains to be seen through the chair.
Denise is going to have to find a replacement.
I'm sure Doreen would probably do it every year. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. Can we now move on to unfinished business?
Just wanted to put in here a reminder. I know that we've not asked for anything on the Fall Special Town Meeting on October 23rd, but typically, we have a meeting before, and I would recommend that we do so in case any business does arise.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to schedule school committee meeting to begin at 6:30 prior to the Fall Special Town Meeting on October 23rd.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote.
And then, per your request, I put back on this agenda. We've not yet heard from the cafeteria workers, although I anticipate we will within the next month. If any committee member wants to join us, Dr. Lozey, Mrs. Worsbicki, and I, we would certainly welcome you doing so.
Is there any interest to join the cafeteria workers' negotiations?
I'll pass.
No? And trust our leadership?
I do trust them.
Yes.
As I do. It's all yours.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item, in terms of budgeting priorities, as noted, we shared those that we've had in the past, as well as the one made by Mrs. Harrington last week, last meeting, I should say. So budgets are due, have been due actually already to Mrs. Worsbicki yesterday. We'll start meeting next week, so if there are any others you'd like us to consider, please let us know. And you can certainly let us know on October 17th as well.
Excellent. Any comments?
Yeah, I have a question. On the extra guidance counselor at Swiss, do we have a ratio of guidance counselor to student at the other schools that we're trying to keep them all the same?
So through the chair, what we do, I could actually get you that data for that meeting. We actually have collected it. So about, and we actually did a comparison with neighboring school districts. We looked at our school nurse ratio, our secretary ratio, and our counselor ratio. So at the primary schools, both of those schools have, as noted on here, Packard has 266, and they have a full-time guidance counselor. And Bryn Mawr has 300, and they have a full-time guidance counselor. At Swanson, they've now passed the 600 mark. They're at 609. And if we compare with the middle school at 626, so we currently have three guidance counselors at the middle school, two at Swanson, one in each of our primary, and 4.8 at our high school level. So we try to stay at the ratio of 1 to 250 or so, was one of the recommended values. And we're in good shape on all of those. Bryn Mawr is slightly over currently, and Packard, but that's the ratio. But I can add that to next month's meeting, next week's meeting, if you like.
So our third guidance counselor at Swiss would be at the same ratio basically as the middle school, which...
Through the chair, correct.
Yeah, which would make sense.
Yes.
Especially there are formative years there, too, so, okay.
Any comments, questions? Seeing none.
And then the next item, as you know, we heard from a potential opening of the Mass Preparatory Academy for children. We have reviewed the curriculum there. I've had contact with superintendents, as well as an attorney. And it is my recommendation that the curriculum does meet the standards, based on all of the review that we have done. So it is my recommendation that you approve that.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the establishment of the Mass Preparatory School for Children in Auburn, Mass, with the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed now assuming full responsibility and oversight.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Everything you've sent us says we have to approve it. And I thank you for your diligence on their program and their teaching and staffing and all of that. And on that regard, I fully support your decision. But I just don't like where they put that school, and I'm very concerned about that.
Any other comments or questions? Nope. Seeing none. We'll now move on to new business.
Thank you. So I wanted to make...
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. I'm sorry.
I'm abstaining. Yeah? I'm abstaining on that. Okay. I can do that, right?
Yeah, I just didn't mean to speed things up so that I give you the opportunity.
Well, I could have been answered, aye, but aye.
All right. We've got that established. That's four yeses and one abstaining.
So I wanted to make you aware, I was recently outreach by Colleen Quinn. She's the Communications Director of the Executive Office of Education, our Secretary of Pfizer's office. Governor Baker is interested in hosting a safety roundtable in central Mass, similar to one that was held out in Burlington, probably a month or so ago. And I put in your packet a press release and some information that had come, but the governor has proposed, and it's not yet been acted upon, is a $150 million investment in public education and school safety package. So he's interested in getting feedback from the field. He'd like to see superintendents, as well as some chiefs of police around the table and some other individuals that will sit around and give him input. We're intending to hold it at the media center of Auburn High School. There will likely be another 100 to 150 people in attendance to observe and just to hear the discussions. But it's certainly, based on what has been shared with us as superintendent, and I included in your packet, has the potential to really positively benefit schools, particularly with one of the issues we're talking about is with counselors and things, and really to focus on school safety for children, not only physical safety, but their emotional and academic safety as well. So no date has been set for that yet. We were in communications prior to the Merrimack Valley gas explosions that took place, so I think that probably put this in the back burner. But I have outreach some superintendents and started to make contact. So once they let me know the day and time, I'll fill that in and keep you apprised, too. So it'd be a nice honor to have the governor here and a roundtable in Auburn, so.
Question, is that going to be during the day?
Through the chair, the anticipation is anticipated it would be during the school day.
During the school day? Oh, boy.
So I've already talked to, so he and Phil, I actually spoke with the leadership team about that. So much of the details are still up in the air at this point, but my understanding is the one in Burlington do take place during the day.
Maybe at the high school.
Yes, correct.
Are you going to drop in, Gail? Is that why you're asking?
Oh, yeah. A long time ago, I wrote him a letter. I thought he was our moderator's son, because they have Charlie Baker, and they both want to have it. So I wrote him a letter when he was in charge of insurance, asking for some help. And he wrote me back this nice letter. And then I found out it wasn't the student I had, it was somebody else. So I have a connection with him.
Excellent.
Join that roundtable.
That's probably why he chose Auburn.
Yeah, that's it.
Will the roundtable include any students input, or is it just...
It really is being directed by Ms. Quinn. I can certainly ask her. We actually haven't communicated in a bit. It was shortly before those perfect explosions. So I can certainly ask her. I don't believe that there were any on the panel in Burlington, but that doesn't mean I can't raise the issue, so I certainly will.
Just curious.
Sure.
Thank you for those comments.
The next item is the capital improvement program update for you. So as you can see in your packet, you actually have two documents. So typically, on an annual basis, you approve the one that will be five years out, which will be 2024 fiscal year. And I want to thank Mrs. Worsbicki and Mr. Fahey, who went and met with each of the principals and then presented to me what it was being brought forward that was being sought. As you know, over the years, and the town has been very generous with us, and really have maintained the same commitment that all of you have, is to make sure that our buildings are kept in the best shape possible, so that their longevity for students for many years to come will stay in place. So in 2024, you can see that we are looking to do some unit work, some HVAC unit work, the dehumanification system. We generally put ongoing asbestos projects for any issues that may come up. The flooring project at the high school, and also to replace oil tanks at two, we have underground oil tanks at two. We're looking to have them replaced at two. We have additional ones that we'll look to do in a future year. Those costs are expensive, obviously, but you can't leave them in the ground forever. They need to be inspected, as actually happened today. They came in to inspections, but at some point, their useful life just expires, and they need to come out. And we certainly don't want to have any leaks of any sort. And then, as we always have, some equipment replacements to include our iPad lease. So that is the one from 2024. In terms of 2020, we also, Mrs. Worsbicki and Mr. Fahey and I, looked at the CIP plans for fiscal '20, right up through fiscal '23. So as you can see, we did make some adjustments to this. Rather than cafeteria floor replacement, which we were able to do with some overstock from the new middle school project at Bryn Mawr, to do an electrical upgrade, a three-phase upgrade. What Mr. Fahey describes is we really are tapped out for electricity there. We really cannot add anything more. At Packard, several years ago, I think it may have been in 2009 or '10, it was a former business manager at the time with Mr. Fahey, that school was actually converted, as was the Julia Bancroft, to gas. So the oil tank there is empty. That's where you see the much reduced cost to have that one removed. So we do recommend taking that out there. And then we were able to do that by repurposing food service equipment, because that is a self-supporting program that takes care of itself through school lunch and breakfast items that are purchased. So it is our recommendation that you approve the amendments, as well as the 2024 CIP.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the FY 2024 CIP as presented, and to approve the FY 2020 CIP as amended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question.
Through the chair, actually, I just have a question for Dr. Brunel in terms of how CIP funding can be used, is specific to the fact that Swanson Road seems to be currently bursting at the seams. And I know we typically use it for some sort of replacement, but if there's any reconfiguration to take place, has that been considered for the 2020 CIP funds?
So through the chair, what we can do, what the committee can do, is the 2020 CIP, the bottom line value has been approved. You, as a committee, can make adjustments in where you want those monies to be spent. So the 2024, that's a new amount. So that one, it's wide open for you at this point.
But, and thank you for clarifying, but in terms of needs that might need to get bumped up sooner, I know that we're just, we're currently approving the amendment, but do we feel like there's going to be a need as soon as next year to kind of take another look at where we're going to put all the kids in Swanson where currently? And I'm not even sure that might not even come out of CIP.
Sure.
It might come out of just next year's budget.
Good. So through the chair, in terms of any modular or any structure like that, that would certainly come out of CIP. It was about a $300,000 project to add a modular classroom at Bryn Mawr recently, which then triggered the sprinkler system requirement, which will go in next summer. So in total, it's about a little over a half-million-dollar project. We've actually looked at Swanson Road, because it is lots of kids, different things. And most recently, just last Friday, was there, and looking through, and there is some space available that we could reconfigure in there, and even some classrooms that could be configured. So we've actually been talking about that, Mr. Fahey and I, and Mrs. Worsbicki recently, too, in the past few years, of spaces that are potential for that. So we believe we have monies to do that, if needed. But for next year, I think we're in good shape.
Okay, great. Thank you for...
You're welcome.
Sarah, it's a...
Yeah, through the chair. I just had a question about the Bryn Mawr electrical upgrade. I know that PAC has same, a similar problem. So are we talking like a new grid system that like they did over there?
So right now, through the chair, and I'm going to repeat some of the words of Mr. Fahey, because I'm not going to be tempted to understand it all, but going to, they currently have a one-phase system, and they basically use it all of what they can do. They really can't add anything. So in order to be able to upgrade, you know, for computers and such, they really need to go to this three-phase system. It is not going to require the work through national grid that delayed us. If you remember, we had to delay the things there. This is actually supporting it, because it's a much smaller-sized school, it's able to support the air conditioning units, because you remember that was one of the issues with the heating and all that. So they've already got those in place. This is just going to modernize it and allow them, when they need to add any pieces to it, they'll be able to do so. So there won't be that type of interruption.
All right, because that was my next question, was to make sure they also had AC units working.
Right.
And, you know, electrical and everything that they would need in modern technology.
Exactly. Exactly. This is going to help get them there, but they actually do have units in classrooms right now.
Okay.
Quick question through the chair. The iPads, is the purchase of iPads through Capital, I'm questioning the lower elementary. I know they share iPads, and I, my worry is infection control, you know, little children tend to sneeze, and cleaning of those. If there were more, wondering if it would be less infection issues.
Sure. So through the chair, you know, I think that what you described is absolutely true, having lived in a first-grade classroom for a very, very young time. I will tell you that at grades three through five, those children have their own iPads and just don't take them home. At grades one and two, they definitely do share them, but my understanding is that they use those wipes to try and clean them regularly. Probably not multiple times during the day, though.
Right. And I know they get passed from class to class.
They do. And even within classrooms, you know, for some of the station work that they have, the kids are certainly sharing them. I just wonder, and I can certainly bring it back to the primary grade principals, but the children at that age, we've discussed in the past, we really don't want them to have an iPad all the time. We want to make sure that they're engaging with their books, and not that grades three through five do it exclusively.
Right.
Because they certainly don't. But we may want to try and attack it more from a cleaning standpoint or sanitation standpoint, if we can.
Because I'm thinking, like, if the classrooms had their own numbered system, you know, this child is a number 13, that's the pad that they use. I think strep throat in one classroom, they're using the pads, and then they go to the next classroom. Is that strep throat being passed?
Sure.
Due to the sharing?
I can certainly look into that.
Thank you.
And discuss that. I absolutely hear your point. I do.
My public health.
Well, if I might add, I taught a Title I program one year, and on off time, I had all the kids in the whole school take turns coming to like a computer lab, and I was always showing them what to do, and I was never so sick in my entire life. And it finally dawned on me that I had to tell the kids what to do and not use my hands on the computers. And when I stopped touching all the computers, I got a lot healthier. But you're 100% right. That was, that was a nightmare.
And when I worked in family practice, I remember, you know, just swabbing computers, and this is with adults.
Yeah.
And it was interesting what grew, and I just think, you know, kindergarten, first grade, you can't give them hand sanitizer on their desk, because they could eat it. You know, it's cool to look at. So how do we, you know, when we're passing pads from class to class?
Yeah. That's a great point.
Thank you for looking into that.
I will, and through the chair, just one additional piece. What I can say is, when we actually ended the most recent lease, we kept some of the iPads, so that actually brought our numbers up significantly at the primary grades. So as we look to, I mean, with our new middle school, which is now in its fourth year, those we're going to be looking to replace, so we may be able to keep those and bring them down. So it may be a cost-neutral answer to that.
That would be awesome, yeah. That would be awesome, yeah, because they don't need the technology the middle school needs.
Correct, correct. So that may be a great answer to that, so.
Thank you.
I'll get back to you.
Yeah.
Great. Any other questions or comments?
I just have one more question that I just noticed, sorry. The building rehab at the high school, is that $60,000 there to cover all team lockers, the front facade and the tennis courts?
Correct, and the team lockers would not be for all of the students, that's just in the area where the athletics would be. So it's a much smaller bank. One of the things with the front facade, we may not need that, because if you remember, Bay Path came and did some of that.
I see George in the future up there.
Brickwork and things?
Yeah, scaffolding.
Someone will be up there.
So those poles have been addressed as well, and the resurfacing, but that is intended for those three, for those three things. But the team lockers would be a fairly small number. The front facade may be all set now, because that was unanticipated to be done, but resurfacing the tennis courts would be fine enough.
Okay, it seems like a bargain, but that's why we're going to hit up Bay Path.
Right.
And cut the cost.
Yeah, I'll head over there right after this meeting and get started.
Do you resurface the tennis courts, too?
Sure, anything. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
And then finally, just listed the upcoming events. The high school has their curriculum night tomorrow night. Middle school had one on Monday, and will have some more next week. We have pictures and such, and the Columbus Day weekend is this coming weekend. We have our first half day for students with afternoon PD, so looking forward to an exciting day with everybody.
Great. Yes?
Just a quick comment, sorry. I attended the sixth grade AMS curriculum night, and I just have to say, it was very well done. I thought it was great. I went into it thinking, an hour and a half, this is going to kill me, but it really was entertaining and I learned a lot. And yeah, it was great to come home and be like, you know, I met your teachers, and she said this, and I have all this inside information now. So it really was beneficial. I thought it was well run.
Good.
I agree, with the exception of me maybe getting in a little trouble with one of the teachers for trying to be funny, but, well, getting my son in trouble.
Oh, no.
It was, I agree with this effect, and it was a great event, and Mr. Desto kicking it off, always with a little bit of humor and some heartfelt comments and family comments, and it was a great start to the evening, and it just continued to improve after that.
That's great.
I totally agree, and I'll keep my mouth shut next time I'm in front of my child's teacher.
I can't believe you haven't learned that yet.
No, I'm sorry. All right, and now we move on to everyone's favorite part of the evening, business and financial.
All right, good evening, everyone. First of all, I have a year-to-date budget report that I placed in your packet, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. It's dated as of September 25th. If you have any questions on that, or I'd be happy to answer any.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none.
All right, along with that, I have a sheet of transfers, cleaning up some of the accounts, bringing them, the balances to the, just balancing the budget. So there are some within, transfers within the same series for your information, and I also have transfers between different series that I need your approval on those.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to approve the transfers between the series as presented by the business manager.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I have also included in your packet the FY '19 Auburn Grant awards that we've received to date. I'll go through them briefly. We have the Title II-A, which we call the 140. We've received $38,570, and that goes for helping new teacher mentoring in the induction program, and stipends for mentors and mentor coordinators, and also a portion of the salary for the K-8 Math Coach. We have the IDA Special Education, which is the 240. We've received $553,715. A portion of the salary for our BCBA is attributed to that, staffing for the extended year programming, out-of-district special education program costs, contractual services, special needs, transportation costs, and special education supplies, materials and equipment. The other grant, early childhood, we call the 262. We have $17,053, a portion of the salary for the preschool teacher, and instructional preschool materials are taken care of on that end. We have the Title I, which is the 305. We've received this year $191,941. This helps to cover a portion of the K-8 Math Coach salary, our math and literacy paraprofessional salaries, summer programming for students entering K-8, and also our MCAS 2.0 prep for grades three through eight. Next and last, we have the Title IV, which is entitled the 309. We receive $14,890, which a portion of will go to subsidizing the AP exams for students with financial challenges at the high school, and the remainder will go towards the education of students and their families regarding substance abuse. So those are our grants for this year that we've received.
Great.
If you have any questions or.
Are these grants that yearly we apply for?
Yes, yes, they're year, federal grants that we receive on a year-to-year basis. The Title IV is a newer grant, but the others, we've been receiving for many, many years.
Okay. And what type of legwork goes into that, and who's responsible?
Well, for that, Dr. Lozay and Rosemary Reedy. Dr. Lozay does the majority of the ones that are on here, and Mrs. Reedy takes care of the special education grants as well, and they upload those, and they work very hard on that, putting together the data and making sure, because they make you fill out the budgeting requirements, and then we monitor them all year through the year, just to make sure we spend them appropriately, but they do put an awful lot of work into them, so I'm very thankful for what they do on that end.
Yeah, I just want them to be acknowledged.
Oh, yes, definitely. They do a wonderful job.
Any other comments or questions?
Thank you, this is wonderful.
All right, and next, I'd like to update you on the circuit breaker. FY '19 circuit breaker funding is based, well, circuit breaker funding in general is based on the previous year's expenses for special education. Circuit breaker funding is in place to assist districts in covering the cost of high special education needs, such as out-of-district placements and transportation, and oftentimes the unexpected and not planned for expenses, which are mandated to be covered. For fiscal year 2018, we took in a total of $440,874 in revenues, which we've slated in our budget for fiscal year '19 to take care of the out-of-district tuitions for Auburn students. And recently, I just wanted to make you aware that the state recently released the FY '19 payment schedule for circuit breaker. We'll receive those in quarterly payments, and Auburn is scheduled to receive a total of $291,554 for this year, which has been calculated on a 72% for reimbursement. The reimbursement rate from the, comes from the government, and it can be anywhere from 75%, and it's gone as low as 60% in previous years. The amount of circuit breaker varies with the number of eligible students that we have and their eligible expenses, so that's how they calculate it. And as we make, as you know, if you might say that we've gone down in our revenues for circuit breaker, but as we try to keep students within district and, you know, try to keep them in-house and reduce out-of-district placements, we also reduce our funding eligibility for circuit breaker. But it's a good thing, because we really want to keep our students in-house as much as possible and give them a great education, so. So basically, that's it. Any questions about circuit breaker?
Any comments, questions? No, thank you very much for that report.
Okay, and the last one thing I have to say is Rosemary Reedy, Director of Pupil Services, Mrs. Flynn, her assistant, Ms. Moran, my assistant, and myself attended a one-day training on the upcoming changes to the school-based Medicaid program. It is sponsored by, it was sponsored by the Commonwealth of Mass Executive Office of Health and Human Services, Office of Medicaid. The training was very good. It focused on the upcoming expansion program, which is set to begin on July 1st, 2019. Some of the changes that they're looking to implement is most of the Medicaid had an IEP requirement, and they're going to be looking at lifting that, so they're going to be looking at including coverage of initial evaluations, meaning the other medically necessary services and 504 plans can now be covered for potential reimbursement, which is great news. The next is inclusion of additional licensed practitioners, to include DESI licensed school psychologists, which have never been included, optometrist, licensed dietitian, nutritionist, and a dental hygienist. The last is inclusion of new service specialty types, such as medical, nutritional services, and dental assessment screenings. This training was put together, and it's a first, a first run at implementing the new changes that'll be coming down the road, and more discussion and trainings will follow. I include in your packet a copy of the form, which is one of the most important things, because that's our first priority as a district, is to get parents to, getting parental approval for parents to sign off on this form so that we can claim medically eligible services for Medicaid, which will help in benefiting us on our reimbursements, because Medicaid, as you do know, we use Medicaid frequently in our budgeting, and we use it to offset our costs for special ed needs as well as some transportation, and it's a great thing. If we can increase that, that's awesome, because some of these services were never allowed to be billed for, and now that will be billed for, so that's great. But our big, our big push is to get the parents to understand that it's a good thing to sign off on it and to pass those in as soon as possible, because starting next year, we won't be able to, unless we have assigned parental approval, we will not be able to bill for those services. It's really important, but that's my.
How will we push that initiative?
Well, we're working on that. We, Mrs. Reedy and I have a meeting scheduled to discuss options with staff on how we're going to approach that. We'll probably do some mass mailings, have forms available, and maybe have some information nights, but we're still in discussion stages of that. And it's relatively new, too, to the whole, the whole school communities. All there were, every, all the districts were invited to come. It's new for everybody, so we're all just trying to move forward on that, but we do, we will be starting to have meetings and discuss how we'll move forward on that, so.
Great, well, we look forward to getting more information on that.
Question, is, are all the students able to be covered under that, or if the families have their own health plans, are they, this is for people that don't have health insurance or something?
It's for somebody, it's for students that have Medicaid eligibility.
Oh, okay.
And we're able to bill, and they, you know, they, the services that they do get, that they're receiving automatically, we haven't been able to bill for, but now, if they do sign off, be able to bill for those services, so it's a good thing. It's great. It helps everybody.
Yeah, sure.
Especially for the initial assessments, when you're ready to figure out.
Right, right.
Okay, good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that thorough report.
Thanks.
We now move on to policies.
So as you can see, the first seven policies actually have no changes, but they haven't been reviewed in a number of years, so we have gone through and reviewed those. Those are policies GB, GB, down through GDB. So it is my recommendation that you approve those as noted.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve policies GB, GB through GBD as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
And then the next PAC, the two, GB, EBD, and ILD, those are on second reading, and it's my recommendation that you approve those as presented.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the policies GB, EBD, and ILD on second reading.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. And we do need an executive session?
We do not need an executive session.
We do not need an executive session. All right, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. Good night, everyone.